Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Call this meeting to order at 5:32. Sorry for my tardiness. I'll lead us in the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, coming through just fine.
Okay. Any adjustments to the agenda?
George, the only adjustment I have is under appointments. I'd like to get a board member on the initial interview committee for the middle school principal position.
Okay. Principal search. Board rep. Anything else?
That's all I have.
I've got one. I'd like to, if none of the other board members mind, I'd like to throw in right after adjustments would be fine. I just want to recognize a couple of mistakes that I had made last meeting and also touch on one other subject really briefly. Everybody okay with that? No objections, I should say. All right, well, I'll get right to it then. Oh, there is another. Jason Terry, I believe we communicated there's no negotiations committee update. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm gonna scratch that. Okay, I'll jump right into it. So there was a couple of mistakes last time that I made and want to just put it out there, bring to the surface. The first one, this board had agreed to not, well, voted to not use the chat. And we did use the chat last time, realizing that after the fact, I wanted to just offer that transparency that this board did vote not to use the chat. We used it. I don't see where it was hurtful or harmful, but at the same time, it was a mistake that was made. The other one was when we went into executive session last time, we did not make it clear on what we were going into discuss. You know, maybe not a major issue this time, but it was a mistake nonetheless. And so we'll do better with that one forward. And then also for my overall sloppiness of the last meeting, getting out of order in the agenda and, you know, and whatnot. I still get quite nervous speaking in public, especially when tensions are high. So for that, I apologize. Anyway, and last thing I just want to touch on real quickly, and I wrote something real brief here. So I want to thank everybody who has reached out, expressing their thoughts and feelings on various topics. There sure is a lot of them these days, and I truly appreciate the feedback. I'd like to point out that this is very young board, meaning that none of us have any real longevity on the boards. So unintentional mistakes are going to be made just solely on our lack of experience. A mistake was made unintentionally pertaining to code C5. Prior to last week, there were several policies that I had never actually seen before. So if I had never seen them, then I'm sure others haven't as well. Since then, Mr. Pratt has had them all populated and organized in an easy to find location. And to me, this really highlights a process improvement opportunity for onboarding new board members and also helping us existing board members move forward in proper dealings. So again, thank you all for reaching out. Moving on. Review and approve board minutes of November 23rd. We all get a chance to read those? If so, I'll entertain a motion to accept.
Someone, George.
Thank you.
Or someone else. I'm sorry.
It's all right. We have a motion to approve. Priscilla?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Jason Terry?
Yes.
And I approve. Moving on. Communications and public comment. Anybody? A lot less people here than there was last week, a couple of weeks ago. Communications, public comment going once. Going twice. Thank you for being here. Policies, if any. Chris, I don't think we have any policies, but there is some activity in the policies committee set right, or there's going to be.
Yeah, I'd like to get the policy committee convened at some point in the next two weeks. I know it's gonna be a little difficult. We do have budget committees are gonna have to meet in budgets and stuff. So I'm trying to balance out the two of those, trying to respect board members' time, not trying to fill in every night with a board meeting. So we're making progress. It's just slower than anticipated.
So is this the appropriate juncture to give kind of a highlight of what those, that's gonna look like? Or is it, would that be at a different juncture?
Well, right now, it's just a matter of myself working with the policy committee. And what happens is the board reps who have been appointed to the policy committee will start looking at the policies and let me know which policies they want to review first. There are some policies that need to be updated, and so therefore, they don't have to go through first, second readings. And there are others that we might, the boards might want to adopt, and those would have to go through the first and second readings and adoption. That's where we are right now. We're just trying to organize that. Just so Wes Clark is, I think, taking the lead on the policy committee. And so that's where we are right now.
So that would be at an SU level?
Yeah, you have a rep from.
Yeah, we have one.
Assigned to the policy committee.
Okay, and so it's basically a review with of policies, a continual review with potential introductions to new policies as needs arise, right?
That is correct. It's an ongoing process. It's one of the major duties of the board. It's just with everything going on, the past, I'd say, 12 months, it's kind of taken the back burner in regards to updating policies. They really don't change too much over the years, but we still need to review them.
Sure. Very good. Committees, we got any other committee reports or committee activity?
The only other thing, George, is like I just mentioned, is that hopefully next week, we'll be asking the board budget committees, and it's usually the boards in general. I think very few boards now have committees. It's just the whole board does it to start reviewing the first draft of the budgets that the principals have submitted. So within the next, by the end of this week, I'd like to work with all the board chairs to hopefully get something planned for next week. Through the draft.
And so I'm kind of gonna sound stupid here, but I wasn't a big part of the budget routine last year. I was often off coaching youth basketball. Can you just give a quick overview what that's gonna look like? There's probably gonna be some back and forth, maybe several meetings?
Yeah, usually it does take a few meetings to do that. What will happen at the first meeting is the board will get the first chance to look at the first draft of the budget that the principals have put together. And, you know, you'll be provided with all the documentation, such as the budget. You'll have a chance to ask administrators questions in regards to what changes they have made to the current budget. And then usually what happens is the board, there are changes, directives to go back and add or cut a certain amount from a school budget. Then the administration is directed to do so by the board, and that'll be the starting point at the next meeting. Usually anywhere from two to three meetings.
Okay. All right, any other committee discussion or committee reports or anything? I don't think so, right?
No, that's all the two I had.
Okay, moving on to reports. Principals, I don't see any of you on my screen. Oh, Ms. Hazard, there you go. You're up.
I'll go first. Good evening, everyone. So I want to start by saying that, and you guys know this, but my staff is simply outstanding. Our first week of remote learning took a lot of planning, and they delivered instructions seamlessly on day one. What's more, we increased student engagement and rigor as we had to be able to include new learning and not just keep maintaining skills. We turned our remote teaching and learning schedule upside down to include a lot more synchronous learning, which is live instruction, small group and guided work, as well as asynchronous lessons. As of last week, all of our teachers, including specials, were teaching synchronously. Our schedule this time around includes a morning meeting at 8:30, a math mini lesson at 9:00, followed by independent work, which is more often than not supported by the classroom teacher alive again. Then an ELA mini lesson at 10:00, again, followed by independent work and guided practice. We have two specials a day that take place in the afternoon. And then beginning the week after December recess, classroom teachers will build in guided reading groups into their ELA time using their recent professional learning and materials from Fountas and Pennell Classroom. I'm truly impressed. They give more than 110% every day, and I just wanted to start my report with that. I also want to thank our families. I keep going back to that in all my letters, and I know you guys acknowledge that too, but they continue to support our efforts by reading our communications, corresponding for clarification, and ensuring that their students are present and ready to learn. We really couldn't do it without their involvement. And so thank you to our families. And then our kids, our students, right? They're troopers. They give their best each day. They persevere, they adapt, and they do it all with a smile. You might not see the smiles at home, but we do mostly on camera, and I love seeing them make the best of any situation. Just want to let you guys know that I'm super proud of the work that's happening at our school, and I'm honored to work with our staff and teachers and students and families. So that said, our attendance last week was great. On average, we had 92.9% in attendance. Monday was 92.3%, Tuesday 98.5%, both Wednesday and Thursday 95.4%, and then Friday dipped a little bit to 83.1%. As many of you know, on Thursday, December 3rd, which was last week, I informed our school community, and I know Mr. Pratt did thereafter to the Wyndham Northeast School Community of a confirmed case of COVID-19. It did not impact any of our staff or our students because the person became contagious while we were away. And dismissal and their name and status will remain confidential to protect their, obviously, their HIPAA rights around medical issues. And just so the board and the community knows, appropriate follow-up steps have been taken, including working with the Vermont Department of Health. And this person will only return to school once they are symptom-free without medication. And I just ask that you keep them in your thoughts. I'm super excited that we're able to bring the white elephant sale to our kids this year. So I know that our PTO usually does that with lots of volunteers. But we decided as a school community that we were gonna go ahead and do it with the staff that we have in our building. And so that's gonna happen on Thursday, December 10th. And we, our real goal is to provide our students with as many typical experiences as possible, and this is certainly a longstanding tradition at the school. And I personally can't wait to see the joy on the kids' faces as they select gifts for their family members. So that's what's happening at our school. Any questions?
I have a question, but I have a comment that having kids go through Saxon's River, that was a big highlight, the white elephant sale was a big highlight for them in bringing home gifts to mom and dad. So that's great that you're doing that this year. Priscilla, go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to comment on the newsletter. Thank you so much, Laura, for sharing that with us because that is a tremendous thing that you do and put out from you and your staff. I'm always amazed and always impressed with it. And then I have a question. Are you accepting items for your white elephant sale?
We are not this year. We have, the PTO let me know, and we store all of this in our basement, that there was, they felt that there was plenty left over from years past to move forward with the number of students that we have in person as of right now. And then they purchased, and we've had quarantined some fill-in gifts, but we are not this year accepting community donations. Hopefully, next year, we'll be able to because we'll be at a, certainly there's certainly be a need, but.
Thank you.
Anything else for Ms. Hazard? Ms. Kennedy, I see you right next to her. Go ahead. You're up. Thank you, Ms. Hazard.
Good evening. Thank you. So I want to echo Ms. Hazard's comments about the staff being adaptive, the students, the families. It has been a great week of remote learning that we just came off of. I know there's various mixed reviews from families there, but at the same time, we do appreciate everybody's input on getting the students to learning. Our attendance was not quite as high, but still pretty consistent with what we've been seeing throughout the year. So during the week of remote learning, we were at 89 points, excuse me, 87.38%. And prior to that, the week's averages have been 89%. Today, we were luckily able to get 93% of attendance, so that was positive. And we were able to add some more online guided reading groups. We were able to add some more help through Flipgrid or Pairdeck or EdPuzzle and a lot of other tools. So hopefully, parents saw some different strategies and techniques that were being tried last week. And we will continue to implement those throughout the year as we go, whenever we have remote Wednesdays or if we, you know, after the vacation the next time. And anytime we have to be remote, whether it's a snow day or something else. So we hope to keep increasing our tool bag, and hopefully, parents will see the engagement and excitement on the students' part. But I agree with Laura when saying that the students are excited, they're smiling. I was able to join in many meetings and sessions last week, and it was still great to see the students, even if it was virtually. So that's been positive. This week, we're working on sending cards to the Sterling House. That was a holiday card, and getting some cards into the hands of people who are necessarily isolated or, you know, not able to see all of their family and friends. So we want to make sure we're doing our part to support the holidays across the Bellas Falls community. So, and you'll also be soon seeing our ornaments and things at the Rockingham Roasters tree. So Jay Pomisano, our art teacher, is really working hard to make sure that those get in and get up there very soon. As for the COVID updates, we have three staff members out awaiting testing or monitoring symptoms for contact tracing or essential travel. We have not been made aware of potential, you know, exposure or anything like that. We have two students who are out because they traveled outside of Vermont over the Thanksgiving break, and they're either waiting testing or waiting their quarantine. And then we have one student that was out with symptoms today. We're waiting updates for that. So knock on wood. We're hoping we remain a little healthy and see how we're doing with that. And what else have we got going on? There's always things happening. So we did luckily bring in a new staff member today. Samantha Saunders was able to join us, and she came in for third grade to help with. Ms. Green has got 30 students in her class load there. And so we have two classrooms or cohorts of students. And then Ms. Green splits up between the two. And then we have two teachers, Ms. Cathy Miller and Ms. Jane Stewie, who are also covering the other two rooms as well. And so we've got a lot of support, but it's still not the same having a full classroom teacher just yet for that group. So, but we appreciate everybody being flexible and helping support our students. Let's see, we're working on the budgets, as was mentioned earlier, getting those finalized. So you should be seeing everything very soon and understand we need to be as fiscally prudent as possible. So we do keep that in mind, you know, and we're working to make sure the students and staff have what they need to teach and learn, but also mindful of all the community members and especially hard-hit times right now. So being able to meet all the needs of everybody right now is important. And that's pretty much about it for our report. Questions or comments?
Questions, comments, anybody? Priscilla, go ahead.
Carrie, along with what I asked Laura, are you accepting donations for your Christmas gifts for your students?
So we are not either, unfortunately. So we were not able to participate in the, the task force didn't seem it was okay for our students to do that, but we will be sending some crafts and things that we don't want to give it away too much to families, but we will be sending something home to the families from the school. But we do ask, do you want to hold on to it for next year? We will definitely look into it for next year. So thank you.
Any other questions, comments, Ms. Kennedy? Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. It's great cards to the Sterling House. That's a really nice thing. I don't know if that's something that's done every year, but I'm sure they could use the outlet. So great. Thanks.
Thanks.
Where is she? I don't see her.
I'm here.
Ms. Bukowski, there you are. You're up.
All right, so I echo exactly what Carrie and Laura said on how the teachers and students and families, everybody, rose to the occasion with remote learning. One of the, we have always offered a lot of synchronous instruction in our remote learning, but we did add our Unified Arts classes and PE this week, and those were very well received. But as a way to help us determine the effectiveness and improvements that we made delivering synchronous remote learning from last spring to now, we sent out a survey to our students, parents, and our families. And what we were looking for is, we want to be able to analyze how remote learning may have improved or if it's improved from last spring until now. So we're still looking at the responses, but I can give you a highlight of some of those results. We asked the students if they noticed their teachers using new techniques or activities this week compared to the spring. 73% indicated yes, you know, they most definitely did. We asked the parents to rate their child's experience with remote instruction. 42% told us they felt that it was a positive experience. 16 rated it neutral, and we had several who said they really didn't know. The teachers, 73% of the teachers reported that they felt that our students were more engaged this week than they were in the spring. And 96% indicated that they felt more comfortable with remote learning this week than they did in the spring. Some of that may be why. On November 24th, the In Service Day, which was held remotely, we focused on remote learning tools and strategies. We divided our teachers into four breakout groups. Each group contributed to a shared document that listed and described different instructional strategies and tools that they can use in synchronous and even asynchronous remote instruction. Each group then presented and modeled the different tools and strategies for everyone. There were an awful lot of ideas that were shared, such as Desmos Math, NearPod, Mentimeter, iCivics, FunBrain, Jamboard, Loom, Geogebra. Those are just a few. At the conclusion of the day, that document was placed in our faculty and staff Google Classroom, so everybody is able to easily access it. And it has links and instructional cues and everything else. So they could, so people could go back as they wanted to practice those strategies. During last week's remote instruction, Mr. Quadro and myself both commented on how many of the different tools and strategies we saw teachers implementing that they might not have been using in the spring. And a lot of those tools, et cetera, are all focused on increasing student engagement. And, you know, again, our teachers are doing a great job. They're working overtime, and they're working really hard on everything. The day before, on the 23rd, which was when the board last met, we had parent-teacher conferences. They were held remotely. We had approximately 80 families that attended a conference that day. There were several that were scheduled possibly the next day or still to be scheduled. We sent again a follow-up survey to the families because it was the first time we've done virtual conferences. And we asked our families to rate their experience from 1 to 5, with 5 being the highest. And we got 89% of the families rated the conference experience with 4s and 5s. So we were really happy with that because teachers worked really hard on those experiences and the reaching out of that. Today, our sixth graders started four days a week. Overall, it went pretty well. You know, a couple glitches here and there, but we'll figure them out, and that's okay. We expected some of them. Also, we had several seventh and eighth graders that began attending four days a week based on established criteria, such as, you know, did they have, do they have an education plan? Attendance, are they struggling in virtual learning, et cetera? And Mr. Quadro, Superintendent Pratt, and myself met today to discuss the next steps for the Alternative Site Committee. And we are working on a, at the same time, we're working on a plan that possibly we can have the seventh and eighth grade students at least three days a week, but looking for more of a January date on that just because of the time left now going into December and the start of second semester, et cetera. So we are still working towards getting more students in our building. One thing I overlooked was, I did want to tell you that we averaged 86% of our students were present last week in remote learning, and that number is consistent with our November ADM, which was also 86%. Any questions or comments?
Any questions, comments, Ms. Bukowski? Megan, go ahead.
Um, is this on? I have a new headset, so I don't know if you guys, okay, perfect. So Karen, I'm just curious, what do you guys look for? When a class comes back four days a week, what are the markers you're watching to make sure it's going well or it's not going well? Because I remember you mentioned it last meeting with the fifth graders, and I never got a chance to ask. I'm just very nosy, and it's interesting to me what you keep an eye out as you bring all students back full-time.
There's a few different things, Megan. One of them is what does it look like in the classrooms? You know, how are we maintaining that three feet? How is the cleaning going? Because there is obviously an extra burden of cleaning with more students in the classroom, and that takes more time, which is time, you know, possibly taken away from instruction, et cetera. Reinforcing the social distancing guidelines with the students is something we're constantly, you know, looking at. Hey, did transportation work out all right? Because, you know, we bring more kids back, that's an additional burden on transportation, et cetera. So those are the things also, how are the, what are the teachers seeing? What are the students, you know, seeing? How is it affecting the instruction and the overall culture and mood? Not only within the pods, because the pods are completely restructured when we bring them back, but also in their, in their other classes, you know, when they go to UA, when they go to PE, et cetera. So that, those are the things that we are looking at. I did mean to also mention that we do have 27 teachers and staff signed up for the COVID testing tomorrow. Because there's COVID testing that is taking place tomorrow for teachers and staff. And right now, we are, we're doing really well in terms of everybody's ability to stay safe, et cetera. So does that answer your question?
It absolutely does. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Any other questions, comments? Ms. Bukowski, I have one. So 27 teachers and staff signed up for COVID testing. Is that a typical number or is that just like a? Is that uh, a typical number, or is that just like a um?
It's pretty close to what we had last time. This is only the second time that, you know, the Agency of Education is offering the testing to teachers and staff, and I think we had twenty-eight last time.
I see. So this is a, isn't um, symptom necessarily related, just um,
No, no.
It's offered, go get a test, and I see, okay.
Yeah, it, yeah, our nur-, our nurses um, coordinate it through the uh, Agency of Education, et cetera, and so it's a lot, you know, it's, it's a bit of legwork on their part. But uh, I got the number right before the meeting that I have twenty-seven teachers and staff that have signed up for it.
Great. Thank you for that. Um, any other comments, questions? Priscilla, go ahead.
Yeah, how is the nurse at the middle school doing with the additional requirements that they have? Because they now have to do the contact, contact tracing and all of that stuff, and we're concerned, I'm concerned a little bit with the extra that's put upon them.
Um, I think it would probably be best if I had Jean Hodston um, answer that question, and Rebecca Stockwell spends time in my building, you know, as well. I can say that like everybody, you know, there, this is a lot, this, all of this has been, you know, an increased level of stress and work and organization. But to really get an answer, I think I would ask Jean Hodston to attend the next meeting and answer that question, Priscilla, because it, I don't feel that I would be able to appropriately represent her at this time.
And, and that would give her a chance too, because they just started that. That would give her a little bit of a chance to assess, you know, how it's going with the increased stuff that they're being asked to do, and whether, whether we need to do something about, you know, supporting them. Thanks.
Anything else? Ms. Bukowski, thank you. Uh, moving on, business office. Flora, yep, there's your name. Are you with us?
I am.
Very good.
Okay, here I am. Um, I did send you an email, George, so um, whenever you can get to that, if you could reply, I appreciate that. Um, so currently, uh, we have auditors in house. They'll be with us for this week, hopefully only this week. We'll see. Um, I'm working currently with um, all principals for the budget, so um, I should have everything um, finalized tomorrow for um, Rockingham. I'll be emailing the principals their um, final uh, budget that they'll present to you guys. So moving forward, it will be just whenever you guys on schedule, so we could start reviewing the budget. Um, other than that, right now, um, the concern is, and this is something maybe for you guys to put it in an agenda and discuss how you want to approach it, is um, the um, student activity accounts that the school have. So currently, um, the auditors have suggested in the past that they, that we have a different approach to student activity accounts. Instead of um, right now, the business office, we blindly uh, can't say anything about student activity accounts. We have no access to um, any bank statements, how um, funds are being disbursed, uh, what is being done with these accounts, how, which one is the balance from the accounts. We have no control over those accounts whatsoever. Um, right now, auditors are asking for um, bank statements. Um, there's some bank statements that um, we had to email the different secretaries, so they could just submit those ones to us, but um, I honestly um, have never seen this approach with anybody else. Um, usually, business office is in charge of funds and following through and having bank statements, being able to reconcile accounts. We do not do that with these accounts. Like I said, uh, I have no knowledge whatsoever how much money is in the accounts, what is used for, I know it is student activities, but um, exactly, you know, like which activity, how much is being spent. There's no control over that.
So if I can, if I can interrupt for a second, if uh, who, who knows what this student activity account is used for, if you don't know?
No.
So who, who knows that?
I guess um, maybe school principals. Other than that, um, I know the secretaries manage the accounts. I know it is for activities, but um, other places that I've been in, um, usually what we have is either a credit card, which um, we have it in the business office, and if it's needed for any activities, uh, this is paid for. For example, if it is a school trip and there are certain funds needed, um, school trips are things that are planned. It's nothing that is supposed to be out of the blue from one day to another one. So um, you know, funds are being requested, checks are being cut for those things. Uh, but there's a process in place. There's a process to manage the funds and know where they go, how much is being spent. There's a control in place, which currently, I can't say that I have any of it. Like I said, um, we don't have even access to bank statements, which usually for any of the accounts that all the school have, you know, I have the bank statements. I know how much it is. I reconcile with the system. Um, so maybe something for us to have a discussion later on.
Well, so here's where, uh, excuse me, you mind, I might have cut you off, I'm sorry. Um, it sounds like student activity accounts is a, a pretty broad category. It's, it's kind of what I'm hearing. Um, and, and then the, the other thing is, I'm trying to find it, how it would be a benefit to um, a uh, for the board to have this discussion. It seems that that may, at this point, be a uh, superintendent, administration, business office kind of a, you know, get some clarity first. I mean, if there's something we can offer, then great, but uh, um, at this point, it seems that they're putting your finger on how this is operating is more important.
So to my knowledge, who has the control and access to this accounts for the student activities is um, the treasurer of the board. For example, um, for the elementary schools, um, Jack Brier is the treasurer. He has um, access to the accounts. He is the one that knows information. Uh, for Rockingham, I'm not sure who is it.
We don't have a treasurer, I don't believe. Well, Priscilla, your hand's up. Go ahead, maybe you can clarify that for us.
Um, I think the board chair probably has, has done it in the past, but what I was gonna say was,
Thank you.
I think if it's gonna be changed or, or, or there's needs to be something, maybe we need a recommendation from the superintendent on, you know, on how he thinks that maybe should be handled. I mean, I know each of the schools is, is different because um, they use it for different funds and different things, and it's, it's like a petty cash type situation that they can use, you know, quickly in some situations. Um, it, it varies.
Is this money from the PTO? Is it, is it a line item from their budget, or is this money raised in, in each school? I think Laura Hazard was gonna speak. She had her hand up earlier.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Um.
Uh, can I finish up?
Go ahead.
Possibly, I, I think maybe Rick took care of it before. Technically, I think the town clerk, uh, town clerk is, is the um, treasurer. And so um, we would kind of have to, you know, that.
Ms. Hazard, do you have something you wanted to add? Feel free.
Um, well, first, I agree with um, your assessment of it. I think it's more of an administrative piece that needs to be discussed, but um, I will say that uh, Sex and River does have a student activity account. Um, and we do have internal controls, meaning there's a procedure for accessing those. Two people sign checks, um, and that's all very explicitly written out. Um, it was a procedure that was approved by auditors at my past school, so I just implemented it at this school. Um, so I'm not sure um, if that is, Flora, what you're speaking to, but I do think that it is something that we can solve as an administrative um, unit.
I um, agree with Laura, and we use ours pretty much exactly the same way as um, Laura outlined. We do have a system. It checks and balances on it. Nobody has, can just access it. Things have to be signed off on, um, et cetera. And Megan, to your question, some of it is PTO funds, some of it is fundraising funds. I know for eighth grade, we keep our, all of our grades have a separate account, and the money that's left in the eighth grade account follows them to the high school for their big high school trip. So I, but I, I do agree that I think it's something that should be discussed um, between Chris Pratt and all the administrators, because it sounds like it's not just a Rockingham thing, but it's at with all the schools.
Yeah, all the school has accounts, yes. It's just um, we don't have access to um, bank statements. Like, that was a, a concern today with, with the auditors.
Okay, so it sounds like um, um, sounds to me like um, there's some discussions that can be had uh, offline here, and um, and if we, as a board, can assist in any way, we're here for you. Is that?
Okay, I, I was just wondering who was the treasurer. That was the main question.
I don't think the Rockingham Board has a treasurer, and um, I'm, I'm not learned enough to know why, but um, I'm not sure that there is one. I mean, I can go back and watch the video of the uh, uh, reorganization meeting back in March, but I don't, I don't recall.
We had a community bank trying to get um, statements, so we could have provided um, some statements that the auditors needed, but um, we have no access, and they said that, you know, it was the board's treasurer, which they couldn't give me a name either. So I just thought that maybe one of you guys would have known.
And I might be able to shed some light on that. I believe it has someone at the town office is the treasurer for the board, and so um, I can talk with Flora on that and get the name of that person. Also, we'll follow up with the administration to find a way to uh, get what the auditors need um, for these student activities account.
Okay, great. Priscilla, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, Kathleen Meadcock is the treasurer. She is at the county offices, and she is the treasurer for the district. And so she's the one.
Thank you.
Okay, I do have her email. Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Flora? You got any, any more for us?
No, we are plenty busy.
So um, you know, we got the um, you know, report, the budget versus actual um, of course, we got it today, so we can't really review it, but um, I would encourage board members to review it, and any questions, comments, concerns, uh, make note for next meeting for Flora, okay?
Yeah, the, the um, report is automated. It goes um, twice a month out. It's just a system report. It's not that we sent it out at last, at the last moment.
No, 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 that's fine. I mean, it's a, it's only, it's the beginning of the month, so it's, I understand that. Um, it's just uh, of course, not able to review it and, you know, have questions uh, for now. So uh, if there are questions on the report, please note them and uh, and bring them back to Flora next time. Megan, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure I understand the fiscal year is July one to June thirty, correct? In the district? Okay, perfect. Thank you, Flora.
Welcome. So it will be good for you to re-, um, guys to review um, the report next um, time we meet actually for budget, because most likely um, it matches with the budget. Your year today for FY twenty-one, it matches for whatever it's, um, we have um, currently with budget compared for next year as well.
Yeah, I think sometimes we, we get messed up with timing and um, you know, I'm just gonna reiterate that it's okay to make note for, for next meeting if there's any questions. I know it's a little bit of a distance away, but um, yeah, anyway, so. Flora, anything else for us?
No, thank you.
Any questions, any other questions, comments, concerns for Flora? Crickets. All right, you're off the hook. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, WNESU Board, there hasn't been a meeting since last time, so there is no update there. Uh, new business for discussion, action if any. Uh, I'm sorry, that's principal search, that's, that'll be executive session, so uh, there's no other new business, is that correct? Perfect. Unfinished business for discussion, number ten. Uh, ongoing, moving steps two to three. Progress obstacles, next steps. Any uh, Chris, any update or um, bullet points there for us?
I can't, I think Karen discussed it a little bit. She continues to work with the committee. She has it doing a lot of work. Um, I know from the list I saw, um, the committee has vetted twenty-eight different, you know, sites around town um, that they've, they've vetted, and so it's one of those situations where a lot goes into play when you're looking at a new building um, to work out of, um, to say, you know, very least, the, you know, if we were able to find another building, it has to be a building that the school board insurance trust would be willing to, you know, ensure and let the kids in the building. Um, some of the things that we have to look at is we, you know, most of us know that um, what are required to do safety-wise and fire-wise is a lot different um, when you have students in the building than when you have adults. So it's, it's a process. I was very impressed with the amount of um, buildings that they, around town that the Karen and her committee of, of people have been looking at. I think they're up to twenty-eight now. Um, so they are, they're doing their due diligence as the board has asked and looking for um, additional sites. Um, I found by just going through it for my own purposes is that, there's a lot of them there that just wouldn't work, whether it's um, either they're totally closed to COVID, or they still use the building at partial times, or there could be ventilation isn't up to speed in those particular buildings, because they don't necessarily have to be, because they don't have students in that building. But that's where we are right now. Um, I feel the middle school and her task force are doing a great job trying to um, find a location. It's just um, it's an ongoing process right now, you know, but it was nice to hear that she has a solid plan in place. Um, and hopefully, we can get more students, seventh and eighth graders back. You know, I think one of the reasons we wait on to that a little bit, because once we have the VTVLC open enrollment again, um, we might have a lot of students going from either VTLC back to the middle school, or we could see some students from middle school going back to um, VTVLC. So I think they're, the approach that they're taking right now is a, is a sound one, and they're, they're just trying to make sure that they're doing their due diligence. So.
Thank you. Any uh, that's great. Twenty-eight sites uh, been explored. I, I personally appreciate that. Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Um, any questions or comments for Chris or anybody else? Megan, go ahead.
Yeah, Chris or, or anybody who can answer that. When, when will you guys have a, an idea of who's shifting from VTVLC or who's shifting back? When does that have to be kind of settled before, you know, next January?
Yeah, the, the, in, the uh, the enrollment and everything, you know, whether, you know, we, we should know who's coming, who's going with VTL, VCL second semester around the second week of January.
Just to clarify, you should know by that point, uh, how many are coming and going?
Yes, that is correct.
So at what point would they be coming and going uh, after that, I would presume?
Yeah, it would take a few days just to uh, knock everything down, but I know that's, you know, based on the numbers we have, I think that's when the uh, middle school looks at the plan and see, you know, what can be done in regards to have we, haven't we found a space? What does that look like of bringing kids back? You know, but I think in her plan earlier, um, Principal Bukowski said that, you know, looking at bringing kids back, you know, at least the seventh and eighth graders, three days a week. So it's a, it's a moving target, as, you know, as we all know, as we continue to see, see more and more cases. Um, I know from what I'm seeing from emails and everything, you know, the concerns are, they're changing a little bit in regards to, I think parents are more cautious in regards to with the increase in numbers of what their options are. And so it's gonna be very telling, um, was, you know, after, I think, next Friday, when we start really seeing the results of the Thanksgiving holidays, um, with the seven to fourteen days. We're predicting, you know, we'll see it either way, you know, it's gonna go up or not, so we're at different stages here, but we should know everything we should know by second week of August and start putting in place for um, hopefully the third week.
January, right? Yeah, you meant January.
Lynn can give specifics, I believe.
No, no, it's just uh, it's just, you said August, that's all, and you meant, you meant January. We all, we all, we got you. We know this.
Second semester begins January eighteenth, and that's um, at the middle school, Bellas Falls Middle School, and I believe that's also um, VTVLC's day as well. So things will be being put together um, definitely in those two weeks after the holiday break.
Very good. Priscilla, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Um, I have two things. Um, it was also mentioned in the re-, in the minutes from last time, and so apparently in, in our discussion last time, about um, rearranging two instructional areas. about um rearranging two instructional areas in the school. Is that also continuing to be a possibility? Or or not?
Yes, it is. We're still looking at that, and actually, one of them, we have repurposed already, starting today with the increase, well, two spaces with the increase um of the sixth graders coming back, but kind of like Megan asked, you know, what do you look at? We need to look at how we can use our spaces appropriately and not take away experiences from our students.
Good point. Um, the other thing I wanted to ask was, I know at the um governor's um conference last, probably Friday, um, he mentioned that there were um districts within the state that had um uh obtained waivers for twenty-nine people to, school board members to be able to substitute in the schools. Um, because s- school board members cannot substitute without getting a waiver. We're not allowed to do that. Um, as I had looked into it last last summer, thinking that, you know, I could help out and do that kind of thing. Is that something that you could use at this point? And um, I would be willing so, being a certified teacher. Um, I'd be willing to be considered. I don't know where you stand on that, Mr. Pratt, whether you need people or don't need people.
I think it goes without saying, I, you know, we need people. You know, I would have to have Mrs. Bukowski um respond in regards to her needs at the at the middle school, but I think in general, you know, statewide, we're short on subs. That's why the governor put it out there. And so, you know, it's a pretty easy process now in regards to, you know, board members or I'd let myself know, and I would submit it to the state for the Secretary of Education to sign off on, but I would have to have Mrs. Bukowski answer that question in regards to the middle school specifically.
Yep.
Well, and the and the elementaries too.
Before we get going any further, I'm not, I'm not sure this, uh, I'm sure, I think this could be maybe an offline discussion between you and and those folks. Um, I don't think we need to occupy board time with that, but uh, I personally appreciate that uh that offer, Priscilla. That's great. Thanks.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to bring it up, cuz I didn't know if there were other board members there. Some of you are working full-time, cannot, but.
I am certainly not certified, Priscilla.
Well, you don't have to be certified to be to be a substitute either. But but most of you are working full-time too, so that's a consideration.
Well, thank you again, anyway, so um um anything else on um moving forward? This seems pretty clear to me. Okay. Uh, supervision evaluation, executive session, um appointments, resignations, if any. Uh, Chris, you asked for a representative for the principal search?
Yes, yes, please.
Anybody, you just want one?
Just one is fine, yeah.
Anybody urging? Uh, feel feel a burning desire? What's the uh time commitment, Chris?
Uh, I would say up to four hours. I mean, all depending on how many fi- candidates that we do the initial interview on. I mean, we don't, you don't have to have a board member on the committee, because the board is going to, you know, have two to three candidates you're gonna interview to make your final decision. And so I understand if there's a, if everyone's busy, you know, it is a quite a big time commitment when you're looking at interviewing and, you know, up to a half a dozen people at forty-five minutes apiece. But I wanted to offer that out there to the boards, knowing that, you know, once we narrow it down to two or three candidates, you guys will have um you guys will have the interview and choose two or none, three or none, so it is a little bit of a time commitment. It's all gonna be done over Zoom. Um, we can't have candidates come in, so.
So so if somebody was to say, yes, I'll be on that committee and maybe couldn't make all of the interviews, but could make an effort, is that, would that be useful? Or would it be best to have somebody that could fully commit to being present at all of them?
Yeah, in this case, it'd be tough, because, you know, you you want pretty much the same feedback for all the candidates. And we're probably interviewing probably, I would say, about four total.
How long do interviews usually last? An hour?
First one's usually about an hour, yeah. Forty-five minutes to an hour.
Any burning desires out there? Priscilla, go ahead.
Uh, not a burning desire, but if if there is not somebody else that really does want to do it, I will do it. Um, but I would certainly bend to letting someone else do it if they are
Yeah. I wouldn't mind doing it. I wouldn't mind doing it. It's the, it's the time commitment, and I I feel that it wouldn't be appropriate to only be able to give half of um an effort there. Um, so if nobody wants to, then Priscilla, you're up, right? Do we have to vote on that?
No, you can if you want.
All right, let's go vote. Uh, all in favor of Priscilla being on the uh principal search, uh, the Rockingham rep for the Rockingham Board rep for the principal search. Uh, say aye, Megan.
Aye.
Jason Terry.
Aye.
Priscilla?
Aye.
I say aye as well, so, okay, there you go.
Thank you, Priscilla. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
You're welcome.
Um, let's see, where are we here? Directors' comments? Anybody wanna go first? Jason Terry, you got any directors' comments?
I do not.
Megan?
Um, no, other than thank you to the principals for those really uplifting reports. We're we're proud of all of you guys. Thank you so much for everything.
Priscilla?
I would just say that um hopefully everyone in our community, and I have faith in them, is following the governor's guidelines of only essential travel. Um, essential meaning something that a person considers essential, uh, sometimes mental health can do without, so essential could be different for different people. But also um keeping limited access to um community, uh, families getting together, cuz he has prohibited any multi-family except for the exceptions that he gave. So I have faith in ours following it, and hopefully we can overcome this COVID thing. And hopefully the vaccine gets out there and at least those first people start getting it immediately. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, uh, I don't really have anything either. Uh, thanks, guys. Thanks, Priscilla, for uh for for offering your services and also uh stepping up for the principal search. Um, and and um, I did send an email to board members this afternoon, and I hope that it was accepted, respect, as sent respectfully, cuz I truly appreciate you all. Um, and I'll just leave it at that, but um you know, I'm looking forward to be in, to doing better, so thank you all. Um, at this point, where are we? Agenda items for next board meeting? Anybody have any right off the top of their head? If not, uh, make sure you get them to me by end of business Wednesday prior to the meeting. Um, anything after that, we'll either have to add in or push off to the next one.
George, are we on the twenty-first? Is that our next one?
Uh, I don't have a calendar.
Two weeks from tonight, right? That's December twenty-first?
The first and the third Monday of each month, so.
Twenty-first, yeah.
It looks like the twenty-first.
Okay.
Yeah, is everybody okay with that? Everybody traveling for the holidays? That was a bad joke, sorry, too soon.
Will we have something about the budget next week possibly that you'll call a meeting?
Yeah, if um as soon as, it sounds like as soon as Flora and and Chris or basically Flora is is ready um after receiving and reviewing the principal um stuff, then um, yeah, oh, as soon as I know, I'll call something, because it seems like it might be a little bit of a time not too bad of a crunch, but it seems like it's gonna take us a little bit, so uh, yeah, I'll call something or I'll work something out or dates we can, something that fits for everybody. And at this point, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session four. And David Clark, if you're still here, you're welcome to join us. Um, uh, discussion on principal search and also superintendent evaluation.